Yeah.
Yeah, I can give one and I'm gonna send the hard copy to them even though it's still not done.
Thank you.
Ready? The like call to order.
Uh, the city council meeting of July 18th, it's a revenue study session. We please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Please begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could please have roll call.
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor pro Tim Cassidy.
Here.
And Mayor Marshall.
Here. Okay.
So, welcome and I do thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules to be here during a work week. We are starting today just as a study session to just begin brainstorming different ideas on revenue generating ideas. I know some of you have come here with some of your own ideas and that's great, that's just to get our conversations going. Matt Baker will walk us through a PowerPoint presentation and we are starting with what Matt extremely feels strongly about, so to speak, putting the cork in the dam and that is in our property related fees, the sewer and salt water, solid waste. So, he's gonna walk us through a bunch of the numbers reminding us about things that he's already presented in our budget and as time permits, we will move on to other ideas whether it's TOT, sales tax. And I have been in constant communication with Jim Liuhan at the chamber to advise him of any discussions we're having. And so with that, Matt, I'll let you start it.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say, it's not on my screen, is it supposed to be on our individuals?
Yes.
Do you guys have it?
It is, but it's also the, the packet here is the same presentation.
Oh weird, usually it comes up with the other screens, I must not hit the button. Hard enough.
Press that little black button.
Yeah, I got it, thank you.
What are we doing here?
It's the little black button Steve, but usually the, it's either the computer screen is on or it's this, so I must not.
Is it on Steve? Is it on? I'm good. Yeah. So, my thought for the presentation today was to start on sewer, salt water, solid waste discussion. I was gonna go through the slides then break for any questions or discussions related to the sewer, salt water, solid waste. Then I was gonna shift focus to the general fund and revenue ideas there and have a presentation covering TOT and sales tax. And then after that, open it up for just a more general discussion on other revenue generating ideas that aren't maybe in this presentation but are things that you would like us to look further into going forward. So, this is really just kind of an opening discussion and we're really looking for guidance as to where we should be focusing our attention with regards to revenue generating ideas. So, this is the fund balance schedule from the adopted budget and why I've highlighted the column on the left, the net change in fund balance, and I know the type is really small, but the gist of it is there is a number of funds in which we were able to pass the budget that draw on fund balance to pay for whether it's capital projects or operating costs. And while fund balance is there for that purpose, that's not a sustainable solution and so the reason we're having this discussion today is to either, or for today is to look at revenue generating ideas because the only way we close that number there is either look for ways to bring in more revenue or look for changes in our current service level because that's the only way we're going to not draw on fund balance in the future to balance the budget. I don't like making mistakes and I don't like admitting to them, but this is one of the few times where it's actually a good one. So, when I come up with the estimates, I'm looking at where we're at year to date and then I try to project going forward. For the sewer and salt water assessments, I was looking at our revenue numbers where we were back in April and May. I looked at historically how much property tax assessment came in in May, June, July for the prior fiscal year and that's how I built my revenue estimate. The one thing I didn't consider when I came up with those revenue estimates is we also charge our sewer fund for, or excuse me, our harbor fund for sewer and salt water services they receive, but we don't do that through the property tax process, that's just done by a manual journal entry on part of finance. So, I did include the expense to the harbor for sewer services and for salt water services, but I never considered that in my revenue estimate for sewer and salt water. So, what that essentially means is we will have more revenues in sewer and salt water than what was in the adopted budget. So, the slide here shows the new revenue estimates for sewer and salt water. And again, that was because I wasn't considering the transfer from the harbor fund for their portion of sewer and salt water services. The expense was on the harbor side, but I didn't give credit to the sewer and salt water for that revenue. That being said, there's still a draw on fund balance in the sewer fund and the solid waste fund. So, back in 2017, we did a cost of service study and the intent behind that study was to set sewer and salt water rates at a level to where they did not draw on fund balance to pay for the sewer and salt water services and we had set rates, projected rates going forward for five years to do that. But what the next few slides are gonna show you is what went, where our estimates were off in the cost of service study and why in the 20 budget we have draws on fund balance in the sewer fund and the solid waste fund with the ultimate intent to show why we need to look at the sewer salt water and solid waste rates to reflect the new costs to operate those funds. So, how the rate study worked is the rate study looked at the current revenue levels in the sewer, salt water, solid waste funds in 2017. They then looked at the fiscal year 17 budget for those funds and then they projected out five years where they saw the operating costs to be. So, for example, they estimated that labor would increase at a rate of 3% a year for the next five years. They estimated utilities will increase at a 2% rate and where they came up with those estimates is they looked at the historical trends as far as labor increases, as far as utility increases, things like that, and then they projected those out going forward five years. The issue, or why we're drawing on fund balance is the projections for the operating costs where they're projecting out five years aren't in line with the actual costs those funds had during the two years that have gone through the study. So, in particular, what this slide here shows is it shows a breakdown of the operating expenses in the sewer fund. It shows the budgeted amount in fiscal year 17 and that was the basis for their projections and then it shows the projected amounts for 17, 18, and 18, 19. So, these are years that have already occurred. As you can see in fiscal year 18, our actual operating costs were 100,000 greater than what was projected and so that 100,000 wouldn't have been considered when coming up with the sewer rates and so draws on fund balance were required to pay for those unanticipated operating costs. Similarly, in 18, 19, you'll see that the projected amounts, or the actual amounts exceeded the projected amounts by over 200,000. And again, when I say projected amounts, I'm not saying budget. So, what happens when we looked at the budget for fiscal year 19 is we looked at the actual costs in 18 and we may have budgeted more than what was projected in the cost of service study. In particular, the maintenance and operations and contract services are where the actual costs exceeded the projections. For maintenance and operations in 17 and 18, the largest driving factor is our utilities were significantly higher than what was projected. City staff's currently looking into why that is, our preliminary review looks like there are some accounts in the wastewater treatment plant where they exceeded kind of the historical average, so we're still doing more research as to why those costs were higher. But the fact is, those costs were higher and we ended up paying for those using fund balance because the cost exceeded what was projected when they came up with the rate study. Similarly, in 18, 19, utilities were higher, but in addition to that, in 18, 19, our emergency maintenance was higher than what was projected as well as we had a, and I apologize for butchering the acronym, there was a permitting process, N-P-D.
NPDS.
And it's an every five year process, but it cost approximately 25, 30,000 and that wasn't considered in the projections. So, anytime we had a cost that wasn't considered in the rate study, it, we're having to use fund balance to pay for it because the revenues are offset based on those projections and those assumptions. For contract services, an example, our Falcon contract in fiscal year 17 was closer to 50,000. Due to changes in level of service in fiscal year 19, the contract amount is closer to 100,000.
Ooh.
And so again, there's 50,000 in.
But how is that possible without that coming back to council?
What's that?
How is the contract able to go up?
The Falcon contract?
Yeah.
It did, it come to council and you guys approved it. We had come to council on the Falcon contract that the previous one was less money because he was not performing the service January, February, there was a few months that he didn't do it. Came back with different options and it was determined by the council that it would be a year-round service that increased the cost and you certainly did approve it.
So, again, that's kind of looking at the years that have already happened.
Thank you.
Just for the birds.
Going forward, we're still seeing those increased utility costs in our 20 budget. We're also budgeting for the increased costs in our contract services. The Environ contract also was higher than what was projected when they did the study back in 2017, so it wasn't just the Falconer's contract, there were other contracts that were higher than what was being projected. In addition, in the fiscal year 20 budget, we made changes to our internal service allocations. So, for example, the sewer previously was only paying in insurance approximately 17,000. The sewer has had our largest claim in the last five years, so we did look at how we were charging and we felt that the sewer wasn't paying its proportional share of our general liability insurance. So, in the 20 budget, we increased the allocation of the insurance cost to the sewer, but again, that wasn't considered when the cost of service study was performed back in 2017. Similarly, in the vehicle maintenance fund, the sewer fund was only being charged 9,600 a year, but looking at and discussions with the mechanics at the garage and public works, that wasn't really reflective of the amount of work that the garage staff was spending on sewer-related vehicles and equipment. And so, in the 20 budget, we increased the allocation of the vehicle maintenance fund to the sewer fund. And again, those increases wouldn't have been anticipated when the cost of service study was done. So, moving on to solid waste, we saw similar increases in our operating and maintenance expenses that weren't considered when the cost of service study was performed. The biggest one is landfill closure costs were not considered in the rate study analysis. So, the city does have a trust fund where we set money aside each year to pay for the future costs associated with closing the landfill and transitioning that space. Those costs, those monies we set aside weren't considered when we developed the rates for the solid waste. So, when we make those transfers, we're really just pulling from our fund balance to make those transfers. So, in the fiscal year 20 budget, there's a 300,000 draw on fund balance and 150,000 of that is our transfer to our trust fund to pay for the future closure costs. The remainder difference is we had no labor allocated to the solid waste fund back in fiscal year 17's budget when the cost of service study was being developed. Beginning in the fiscal year 18 budget, a portion of code enforcement's time was charged to the solid waste fund and that was for the work they do enforcing the green bags and other solid waste related requirements. And in addition, in the 19 budget, a portion of a public works admin time was charged and that's because the city staff does do a lot of the reporting and tracking requirements related to managing the solid waste. As well as we did look at the internal service allocations in fiscal year 20 and we did make changes to the amounts being charged to the solid waste fund to better reflect the services they're receiving from admin and finance and such. And for those reasons, what we end up having is we have draws on fund balance because those costs weren't anticipated when the rates were developed. So, really, there's several options and I'll kind of go over the pros and cons of all of them. Our recommendation would be to do another cost of service study for the sewer, salt water, and solid waste. That would factor these changes to the assumptions with regards to the operating costs. There's, and so in future years in fiscal year 21 going forward, we could then recover those costs through the additional fees related to those services. Another option would be to delay future capital improvements in the sewer fund. The risk behind that, so the sewer fund is generating money, however, the CIP at the levels we plan to spend in the sewer fund would require draws on fund balance to fully fund. So, if we did spend less on CIP, we could build up a fund balance in the sewer fund, but the downside to that is you run the risk of higher emergency maintenance costs, so any savings you might see, you might lose in emergency maintenance as well as there are requirements regarding how much we spend related to the CDO. Similarly, in the solid waste, we could continue to use fund balance to pay for those transfers to the trust fund, but it's not a sustainable plan.
And the cost of doing those improvements at a later dated, the price goes up, the cost goes up as well.
That as well. And the third option would be to subsidize from the general fund, but as I'm gonna go on the next portion of the presentation, that's not a sustainable solution either. And the other downside of waiting for the full five years of the cost of service study to complete before we take any action is what'll happen is when the next cost of service study needs to be performed in two years, if we wait till this one finishes its five year term, what you'll have, you'll likely see is higher increases than you would if you started sooner. So, if we continue to do nothing and draw on fund balance, when it comes time to do another cost of service study, we'll likely see a sharper increase in rates to make up for those draws, whereas if we take action now, we won't see quite as steep of rate increases as if we were to wait for the full five years of the cost of service study to complete. So, that's where we're at in the sewer, salt water, solid waste. Again, it's our recommendation that we go out and do a new cost of service study, which will likely result in a recommendation of increased sewer rates to recoup those operating and maintenance costs that weren't considered in the last study.
And we have to have a study.
We have to be able to prove why we're increasing the rates.
We can't just say because we need $4 million, we can set those rates ourselves, we have to have the study.
We could be challenged and we'd have to be able to show that proof and the timing is such that if you were to, at the next council meeting or so, that we ask to go out for RFPs and we come back, the timing would be such, the time it's all done, it's perfect timing to have those figures and numbers and for you to determine which increase you want to put on those funds and then we can put those funds, those numbers into the next budget and we would have a better picture of where we would stand.
And just approximately, how much is the cost of service study?
25 to 30,000 is my ballpark right now. I think the last time we did it was 35,000. The only reason why I gave you a lower number is we could tweak the scope. The last cost of service study also looked at the, how to fairly charge the different customer bases. So, it looked at how much of an impact on the sewer does a hotel put on the sewer system versus how much of an impact does the resident put on the sewer system? And so, that was also a major component of the study. Depending on, you know, we could have the study focused purely on the costs and keep kind of the overall structure of how we charge the same and so that's why I'm hoping, and again, I could be mistaken, but that's why I'm hoping we can come in a little less than the last cost of service, but it'll likely be around 30,000.
And another major part of that study was how did the commercial trash, and remember that gentleman came and then he came back a second time just so he could justify why he came up with those numbers for the smaller businesses versus the larger businesses.
Right, okay.
So, if we can modify the scope, hopefully we can have some savings there, but again, it's just an estimate at this point.
Do we need a study though for the closure contribution?
For the closure?
Mm-hmm.
Actually, a couple things, that only, Cal Recycle is requiring that every five year, so we're just about in that. We have been in contact with CRNR just last week, or beginning of this week, I can't remember, asking them when that flyover was going to be so, because Cal Recycle had pinged me and said, "So, where's your new numbers? We need to know how many years you have left in your closure," because then they make that recommendation of what the costs are for us and then we know how much to keep contributing to the Northern Trust, so.
We could.
The closure part of it, no, except we do need to know what that number's gonna be when.
Well, we could, just for the closure, as soon as we know what that new number is.
Yes.
Okay. Not really, but cool.
So, obviously today's the study session, we're not making any decisions today, other there could be just direction to the staff, so if you were good with going with us coming back formally at a council meeting to ask to go out for an RFP for the rate study.
One interesting thing would be what the one-time costs are that are reflected in the budget for the last three years.
That's a good question.
The big emergencies that we had, that hopefully are not reoccurring.
Correct.
And so, I mean, if we've got a number that we're looking to recover, is that number a realistic number or does that take into account the one-time numbers that don't show up every year hopefully?
Well.
I mean, while there are certainly some one-time emergency maintenance costs, I would say that of the unanticipated costs, I would say the ones I would consider more one-time would maybe be a third of them. Most of them, to me, are recurring, so for example, the utilities that were estimated in fiscal year 17, fiscal year, or 18 and 19 and, I guess 18 and 19 have been higher than what was anticipated in the study. Similarly, the contracts we know are going to be higher. We're currently negotiating with CRNR, the assumption, not, excuse me, not CRNR, but Environ and the assumption in the rate study was 3% increases year over year, but depending on, you know, how those discussions go and the level of services, those could be more potentially than 3% as well.
There's a lot of slices to the pie.
There are.
Some of these slices are known and some of these slices are unknown and if we knew about the known ones, it might impact magnitude of the unknown slices.
And if we were to do the cost of service study, we would be considering the expenditures that wouldn't necessarily be recurring, so that permitting cost associated with the five year, you know, we could better plan for that. So, that 30,000, 40,000 that we paid in fiscal year 19, you know, we're not gonna see that added cost, but it still doesn't change the fact that we did spend that money and that took from fund balance.
It'll show up.
The other thing that I just wanted to highlight too is when we're talking about emergency repairs, part of anticipating some of those emergency repairs and reducing those is through the CIP. So, looking at, you know, what types of emergency repairs have happened in the past, well, how can we address some of those issues through an actual capital improvement program and then plan for those? So, we're trying to move more towards preventative rather than reactionary.
Valid pledge when it comes to mine. Okay, thanks.
So, the next phase of the presentation, if we're ready to move on, is more specific to the general fund. You know, we could probably pick every fund and go through them, but I went from an order of priority, I felt the enterprise fund, sewer, salt water, and solid waste. Just given the timing it takes to do the study and to adjust the rates, I felt like that was the highest priority and then the second is the general fund. So, in the adopted budget, what you see is that there's a slight net operating revenue, but due to capital projects, you know, costs associated with the local match for capital projects as well as transfers to support other funds, there was a net draw on fund balance of approximately 500,000. So, what we're seeing is we're seeing general fund revenues covering our operating expenditures, but like I said, draws on fund balance to pay for capital outlay as well as to subsidize other funds. Another thing to remember is the city did lose a general fund revenue in the fiscal year 20 budget going forward. We received monies for administering, administering the successor agency, but as redevelopment and successor agency activities wind down, the costs for the city to administer those has correspondingly decreased, so we get less monies for administering. That, and that was approximately 500,000 we lost in the fiscal year 20 budget. The other challenge is our major operating revenues aren't increasing at the same rate as our operating costs and so that's why we're focusing this portion of the discussion on TOT and sales tax because they are the largest two revenue sources for the city and I, using these also more just to highlight the fact that our revenues aren't increasing at the same rate as our operating costs. There are definitely other ways we can look at to generate revenue in the general fund, just to kind of open the discussions, I chose these two because they are the largest two. So, currently, as you know, we have a 12% TOT. The TOT accounts for approximately 55% of our general fund revenues in the fiscal year 20 budget and over the last two years, we've seen an increase of less than 1% in TOT growth and right now, our projected numbers in the 20 budget are in line with that, I believe, a 2% increase from fiscal year 19. So, as you can see, we're plateauing, if you will, in revenue growth, but unfortunately, our operating costs have not similarly plateaued.
I don't think we've plateaued. We've taken a bunch of rooms out of inventory for the last couple of years. You know, you've got the atwater out, you've got the zangray out, you've got the beach house out, those, like, the atwater and the zangray will be coming back in, we don't know where the beach house is.
But doesn't the beach house still pay TOT?
No.
No.
More than 30 days. And, yeah.
But, I mean, there's probably, the atwater's probably worth.
I mean, we can, we can look and hopefully, my TOT estimate is being too conservative. We've also had really, you know, other than the weather, maybe this winter, we've had some of the most, the busiest years ever on the island the last several years, so hopefully that trend continues, but we've had really good years, but our concern is that our largest revenue over the last three years at least hasn't been keeping up with operating costs.
I think you're right. I mean, you think of August and September and those are gonna be high-end rooms, they're not, you know, they're not.
And, you know, we can come back, you know, after the summer numbers come in and provide another update.
It'll just maybe worth a phone call to two operators and figure out the budgeting. You know, they've gotta have a phone out there, otherwise they wouldn't spend all the money to do the remodel.
Good point.
I'd like to throw something on, before we start looking at TOT, I mean, it's definitely a good revenue source, but I would really like to focus on some off-season events. I know that Dan in the chamber do a good job and we have our regular weekend art festival, jazz tracks, things like that, but I really would like to focus on a December, January, February, almost like a week-long event like we did, I'll use the Grand Prix as a really good example, that brought in, in a week that we had very little revenue, pretty much booked all of our hotels for the entire week and really made a big impact on the city and not only are we getting the revenue, TOT, warfage for that, we're also getting, I think, repeat visitors because if we tap into a different demographic like the Grand Prix, and I have two or three on my mind right now that we could bring over, they're gonna see the island, they probably haven't been here before and that'll be repeat business for several years after that.
Sure.
So, you know, it's already expensive to get to the island with the boat where if we raise TOT, there, it's like if you go and look at these other cities Anaheim, I mean, I know they're more than us, but they can drive their car up to the parking lot and you're talking about a four-family coming on the boat and that expense and then adding TOT, I mean, you almost could look at it like, it's super expensive to stay here, so. I mean, I would like to volunteer, maybe with Dan or Jim or anybody else, another council member, to have a committee that will look at very different off-season events. council member, to have a committee that will look at very different off-season events and maybe see what we can do to promote that.
Yes.
So just to kind of go through the next slides, and I see the direction we want to go, but just so you have the information, I did do a comparison of a number of different cities, comparing the TOT rate and also the percentage of TOT makes of their general fund revenues. I thought this comparison was useful to see other cities, how dependent they are on TOT, like Avalon is dependent on TOT for operating its general fund. The one thing, whenever you're going out and looking and comparing TOT, something also just to keep in mind, is a lot of cities have an additional assessment separate from the TOT that they use to fund tourism development. And so, right here, there's a number of cities where I did include what those additional assessments or taxes are. Interesting one, just to kind of throw it out there, is Manhattan Beach actually recently approved in the March, their March election, an increase up to 14%, which allows city council to raise or lower TOT, given certain guidelines that were in the measure. I only bring that out because I hadn't heard of that before, and I thought it was an interesting approach. And again, lastly, this is just another slide, slide to kind of compare cities and TOT, and it's just looking at the TOT per capita, just so you have that information available to you.
I'd be interested to have you, if you go back a couple of slides, where you talk about the percentage of the general fund, the revenues, I'd be interested if you took, say, seven or eight of those, the lowest percentage cities, and let us know what is the primary contributor to their general fund?
And off the top of my head, my guess would be property tax. That's, most cities, number one is property tax and/or sales tax, but I can definitely do the research and let you know.
Okay.
And then what does that tell us, just to enlighten me a little bit?
Well, I'm curious to know, you know, some of these very low percentage are... Maybe it is property tax? Sorry, I'm thinking two lines at the same time. Maybe it is property tax? I'm curious to know. Ours is, ours is pretty high. We're in the top two or three percent there.
There's only four or five cities that have a higher percentage of their general fund paid by TOT, so we are near the...
Yeah.
We're definitely near the top of that.
So if there's something that jumps out, that could generate further ideas for us, if there's something that other cities are doing that we're not aware of, or we haven't thought about?
Another big revenue source that we don't have, that a lot of cities use, is the UUT, utilities users tax. The challenge here is we have such a small population base, that, you know, Long Beach could have a relatively small percent on their utility bills, and it generates significant numbers, but our challenge is just our small, smaller kind of year-round population base.
And I believe Bob Torres, during his tenure here, he had done an evaluation of that, and that number was very minimal.
And I want to say it was, we thought it could potentially bring $50,000 a year, but that's, it may have been less than that, that's just kind of my recollection. But again, that would be a tax paid for by the residents entirely. Just real quick on, on sales tax, and again, hopefully, similar to TOT, as new businesses come online, and new restaurants open up, hopefully, we can change this trend. Sales taxes are second-largest revenue source in the general fund, and it accounts for approximately 10% of our revenues. Fiscal year nineteen, sales tax is projected to come 11% down from fiscal year eighteen. We use HDL as our sales tax consultant, and so what they do is they look at every individual sales taxpayer in town, and they meet with us on a periodic basis where we discuss business openings and closures. And so they use that information to come up with, with their estimates, looking at the historic trends. We also do receive part of our prop, our, our sales tax from county pools, which we get allocated based on a number of different factors. So it is local businesses, but it is also, we get a portion of county pools, and that's how we recruit sales tax for, say, purchases on Amazon and things like that. But our 20 estimate, our 20 projections are expected to be slightly higher than fiscal year nineteen, but still down from fiscal year eighteen. And again, our two largest revenue sources over the last several years have been flat. We've lost the, some administrative allowance monies in the general fund, but our operating costs continue to, to increase, and that's why we're seeing those draws on fund balance in the general fund.
Let me ask a question. I should know this. Restaurants, there's no sales tax in it, in... So what do we actually get from a restaurant? There's, there's nine percent on a bill?
Some percent is and some, some isn't. To-go isn't, and certain drink items aren't, and when you're eating in, it is. So it's about 50%.
So like Coney Island, for example?
Coney would have a sales tax. Now, if it's a, if it's considered a grocery, my understanding at least, if it's considered a grocery, it wouldn't. So, for example, if I buy a muffin and take it to-go, it's considered a grocery item.
Right.
If I take a muffin, have it warmed up in the microwave, and eat it at the establishment, it's technically not a grocery at that point, and you would pay sales tax.
I just never pay attention when I go to Coney if there's a sales tax.
So it depends on whether you eat it there to-go, and there, and I don't know Coney's, all the rules for Coney, so I may be wrong, but generally speaking, my understanding is if you're eating it there, it's going to be taxed. If you're taking it to-go, it depends on the nature of the item.
Okay.
But, you know, anytime there's alcohol, that would be subject to sales tax as well.
Okay.
So this is just a breakdown, just so you have the information of how we have a 10% sales tax and where all the, the different monies go. So of the 10%, the city keeps 1% of it. The city also does have 0.5% of it, which goes to the hospital. So, again, we receive the monies as part of the sales tax process, and then we issue a warrant or cut a check to the hospital, so it's purely a pass-through. The rest of it goes either to the state general fund, or there's a number of transit-related sales taxes that go to LA County. And we do see some of those monies back in the, in the transit monies we do receive from Metro.
So let me ask a question. If Jason is listening up there. To change any of that and the proportion of which we give, that has to go to the...
The voters.
The voters. So if we decided we wanted to increase the hospital tax and give them a little more money, all of that goes to the voter?
All of it would go to the, any, any change to a tax, my understanding, would have to go to the voter. So the, there is a cap as to how high you can take sales tax. It's not as straightforward as you would think, because it's 10% with, with an asterisk. Certain of the components may not apply. So in discussions with our sales tax consultant last year, it's our understanding, we could raise our sales tax by a quarter of a percent, but that's where we would be capped. So it would be 10.25. There are 18 cities in LA County that do have a combined sales tax greater than 10%. And I can provide that list, but by and large, most cities in LA County are 10%. So again, these are just options for consideration. The reason I picked these two to kind of begin the discussion was because they are the two largest, and they have, you know, been not keeping pace with our operating costs growth. Another thing to, to keep in mind as we look at new capital projects for the city, even when we do get them grant-funded, there's, once the, the new structure, the new park, the, the new building is built, there will be new operating maintenance costs associated with maintaining that new structure. And really, currently, our general fund isn't generating enough revenue to support those future projects that are being considered. So it doesn't necessarily have to be TOT or sales tax, I just brought these up because they are the largest two. But if we do want to pursue some of those, those additional improvements to, to the town, we also need to be mindful of how we're going to, to pay for them from an operating standpoint. And that, that's what I prepared for the, kind of the formal part of the presentation. My thought was to kind of turn over the remainder of the time to discussion, and it doesn't have to be limited to the general fund, it, you know, just any other revenue ideas or areas you would like staff to, to focus their, their attention on. Similarly, we could look at operating costs, because the other side of the flip of the coin is looking at the expenditures. But again, there would be corresponding reductions in level of service associated with those. A lot of our operating costs in the general fund are tied to labor, or they're tied to large contracts, like the sheriff's contract. So there, there isn't a, a ton of flexibility, if you're looking at the, the operating cost side, without corresponding reductions to, to current services.
I think we're partially working in a vacuum here, because I think there's some large slice of revenue that's not being reflected in these tables. And I think we're, like we're crying wolf, but we're not sure, because when you stick 120 rooms back in the inventory, and they're going to be high-end rooms, that's worth $600,000 or $700,000 a year. And I think it would be, be hoofless to make a phone call to find out how, what it's going to look like.
We can do that, Councilmember Olson. The one thing that, and I believe Matt has noted it a couple of times, not today, though, that even though there was rooms taken out of the inventory, the hotels that existed, they're, they're...
So...
How many rooms they filled up?
The rooms went to other hotels.
So, so while we did see, you know, as the Atwater went under construction, what we did notice is slightly higher occupancy percentages at the other hotels. So our, our theory was that guests that would have stayed at the Atwater previously, you know, chose other hotels, and so we didn't notice a significant drop when the, the Atwater left. And so that's part of the reason, I understand, that they're going to be nice, there'll be a more expensive rooms likely than what was previously there, and more marketing will likely be put into those as, as, so, you know, we, we may see an increase, and that's something we can definitely reach out and get more info on.
Do we know what a 100% occupancy on one night in Avalon generates? Would we be able to figure that out, just by looking at the regular rates versus off-season rates?
I, I could come up with an, an estimate of what that would look like.
I would like to see that, and you could compare if we were to do something in a December with 10% occupancy versus filling it up, how much money would that generate?
Steve, was that for one night or one month?
We can do it for one night, because we can, we can calculate it, the rest of it, just to have an idea.
And I, and I like the way you're going and all that. However, for the kind of events you're talking, we sure wouldn't see it in this fiscal year, you know, because it takes so long to... And I know Lavente is working on things, and there's, you know, but yeah, we wouldn't see it now, but we could sure see it in the future.
Just out of curiosity, and I'm sorry I did not print my copy to have it, do you have a copy of the visitor-driven revenue report that you just sent out?
I, I don't have one on me, but I can circulate it after the meeting.
Well, no, I, I have it, I just didn't print it before.
I don't think I have it on this computer either.
Well, I have it, I needed it right now.
I'm going to get you a copy right now.
Oh, got you, got you, okay. Because I, I think, and I just wanted to verify the statistics on that sheet, I think that the, we, we have seen a decline, we saw a decline in our vessel traffic this past winter because of the, partially because of the rates of the harbor. So I, I don't know if that's factored in at all.
So there, there was, I mean, I didn't do anything in this presentation specific to harbor, but our, our mooring revenues were down for fiscal year nineteen compared to eighteen, and it, it likely could be because of the rate change. Also, again, from my experience, we had a rough winter as far as weather goes, so I think that likely also was a contributing factor. But unfortunately, even years of bad weather, sometimes we have more operating costs because of that, and we don't see the, the revenues, because people aren't coming when it's raining and whatnot.
I really appreciate Councilmember Haves' take that, you know, increasing, we just keep increasing taxes, just increase, 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 increase. And we, you know, now put an increase on the boat travel, which is the number-one complaint that I hear in a hotel, is from guests that it's so expensive to come over, then you have the cost of the hotel, and then everything else is so expensive. Like, it's just more expensive to come to Avalon than it is, in some cases, to go to Disneyland for a day, or two days. So I would like to look at options that aren't just relative to increasing taxes, that perhaps we, I don't necessarily want to start the TOT conversation right now, but, but perhaps the Chamber looks at redistribution of where those funds go. Like, where is it, you know, I know they do print advertising versus, you know, physically being at shows versus other things, but, but maybe we go, maybe the Chamber looks and targets specifically organizations or groups that, that come for different events that they're doing in other cities. You know, something that's generating more, generating the more traffic rather than increasing taxes.
And I have another question, the, I think all of us sitting here don't want to have to increase taxes. I mean, I don't think any of us would ever say that. However, the, so somebody approached me the other day, when the Express did their birthday thing, and when it did one free and the other one pays, I'm curious, was there a loss to the city on that? And because if the boat counts have kind of stayed the same, is that what I see from, from the two of you, is that what you come up with, Jim?
I would, so our warfage revenues for, say, the first half of fiscal year nineteen were in line with the prior fiscal year, but our January through, I think we have through May reported to us at this time, have been down. I believe February was down considerably, the other months, less so, but the, the warfage traffic was down the second half of fiscal year nineteen.
Okay.
And, you know, we did have the rate increase that went into effect in March, but we also had a rough winter as far as weather on the island as well.
Total rough, yeah.
Late, late winter storms, or even spring storms, and what have you.
I would be curious, from the Express's standpoint, if, if they would see benefit in, in bringing that back, because it seems like I bring somebody with me on my birthday, and oftentimes, they would bring another person as well, so, I don't know.
Well, they also do the best-of-winter program as well, which is a significant benefit to try to increase traffic during the winter months.
What is that?
It's a two-for-one.
Oh, they do that now in the winter? Oh, I didn't know that.
They've always done it, at least in 11 years that I know of. It's midweek.
What is that?
They come over in the afternoon, they leave in the morning.
Oh, they have to spend the night?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, well, even the day trippers would be nice as well, though. And Yoli?
Hi, Yoli, Montano Hotel Metropole. I just want to give you some, some, what we're seeing in trend right now with occupancy. The Atwater has been closed, a lot of the construction workers from El Rancho Escondido are staying there midweek. So even with that, I still can't fill rooms Sunday through Thursday. We are down. We're usually down the first quarter. We, we're going in still downward, we have a lot to recover. And I am discounting 20, 25%. It's, it's July, August, September. I am so terrified with talent, we're having to charge our, our clients, our customers, an increase when I can't even get them here at a 12%. I mean, they're, everything's too high. And unfortunately, right now, I mean, the Catalina Express is wonderful, however, they leave at 8:00, 9:00 PM now. So our day trippers are huge rate of day trippers and not overnight stay. This has been a problem for years. We need to figure out how to bring guests over here to stay three, four, five nights. This is what Steve is talking about. It's great having guests for the day, it doesn't do anything for occupancy, anything. And that's where you're getting your, your, a big chunk of your revenue. So we really need to, before we make any decisions, reach out to hoteliers, find out what occupancy really is. I, I mean, just because two hotels were down, didn't give us the business that I was anticipating. So I, I, like I said, I am discounting left and right right now, and it's, it's actually really scary. So I think we need to come up with how to bring visitors to Catalina for overnight stays.
Sunday through Thursday.
Yep, mhm, and this is a huge thing, and I think the city needs to be a part of it to help out. out.
What kind of dialogue has been going out the chamber for Sunday through Thursday?
We do discounts, we do, there's, we have a group committee that is an extra committee that we added on, part of the chamber. If you want to participate, you pay an extra amount, we go and go to different areas of the demographics to try and bring groups and weddings and stuff like that. However, in the history that I've been at the chamber and in this business, even with Wayne, it's just, I'm not sure how, but we need to figure out how to bring these corporate groups and these events. Getting a good internet would help, but that's just...
Right.
That's just, I just had to throw that in there, because that is a huge, huge problem, and I'm not trying to get off topic, but when corporate people come here, they want to be connected.
Yes.
And they have to be. So that's another issue to help bring guests. But we're down, and increasing is frightening. Operations, I know when I'm down, when it comes to operations, I have to tighten up. I mean, we need to look at where our operations and how we can, even though it's not reality sometimes, but there are areas where you can cut and try, and that's called business. And we all have to do it, but increasing's not the answer.
I think, Matt, I want to just tack on what Yoli's saying, based on the comment that you made, if we, if we cut expenses, we're also cutting service. And I just, you know, it's really important to remember that minimum wage has gone up significant, a significant number for small businesses, and especially on, in an area like here in Avalon, where everything just to live here is so much more expensive, it's become harder and harder. You've got business owners that are back to working front desks of hotels because they can't afford to pay, you know, the staff, the workers' comp, the mandatory medicals, all of these other expenses additionally.
Thank you.
Additionally, you know, we're faced with having a guest decide whether or not they want to stay two or three days, or whether they want to spend the exact same amount of money and get on a plane and go to another state and spend two or three days for the, you know, same amount of money. Obviously, a different experience, but it is becoming more and more difficult to provide that good quality service because of the expense. Additionally, I was going to say, you can see the trend if you ask any hotelier who participates, which I think there's only three or four hotels on the island that don't participate in the GDS and online bookings, but, you know, seven years ago, that percentage of booking might have been ten percent at the very most. Nowadays, that percentage is eighty, ninety percent of the bookings are coming from a GDS system, which is then generating anywhere from fifteen to eighteen percent minimum cost to, or travel agent and online travel agent booking fees. So right out of the gate, you've got, if you're, what Yoli's saying, she's already discounting her room fifteen, twenty percent. Addition to that, she's now paying fifteen percent to an online travel agent, she's cutting her costs, which is then cutting service. And I think that's where I'm really thinking, I don't want to increase taxes, so to speak, I want to find alternate ways to... If we do things like groups, for example, or we do up-for-whatever, or, you know, some of these bigger, larger things, we're not paying fifteen percent to the travel agent, we're not having to lower, you know, lower our service levels, so to speak. So, anyway, sorry.
Hi, Jim from the Catalina Island Chamber and Visitors Bureau. A couple of points, just since Cindy set it up so nicely, I'll just carry forward on one comment there, too. There's a term that we use all the time in industry, it's from look to book, like, when do you see site traffic versus when do you see activity and booking at the area hotels? That window is shrinking, and it's shrinking dynamically. This summer versus last summer, it's about a seven-day difference from when people are deciding to travel and then actually traveling. And I know that when we did the last visitor profile study, two recommendations with a short look-to-book window then, at fifteen, eighteen days then, and we're seeing like seven days now, was to work with our transit partners, so pretty much they meant Catalina Express, in setting up a dynamic pricing model, where maybe there was a day of the week that we really needed occupancy, where they could have a more variable price. You see it in the Southwest Airlines model, you see it in...
Disneyland.
Disneyland. You see it, I mean, it's what's out there, and it's almost a consumer expectation at this point. I know there's, I'm not in the position to tell the Catalina Express how to do their business, or, and I know there's things that they're up against as far as rate, you know, what's been approved in their rate models and so on, but it may be worth revisiting that recommendation as part of this conversation to a degree. That is what they're doing with the best-of-winter, but it's, that's really bundling with a discount versus what this was talking about, was just consumer shopping online, you know, and finding that discount. Another thing that ties in with what both Yoli and Cindy said is our hotel partners who are participating with dollars on the table in the group sales and marketing initiatives are citing their cost of overhead increase as reasons that they can't participate at the same level they did a year ago or two years ago. So we're actually net down about fifty percent in the dollars available for the group sales and marketing initiative. We've already moved more of our regular marketing dollars over to the group side of that equation just in the last year to keep it alive enough to give us some return, and it is. The RFPs are not down by fifty percent, even though the spend was down by fifty percent. And the final thing on the groups, just to remind you that we do have, coming in this fiscal year, a winter, early-spring group that you guys are part of supporting already, which is Otillo. We hope that that will be a multi-year major impact, you know, so that's a great example of something like that, that is not weather-dependent, other than boat transportation, we're all weather-dependent when it comes to that. And, gosh, there was another thing. Oh, the looking at the sort of other destinations, we have a key set, a competitive set that we look at on a monthly basis for where consumers have told us in the past they're considering going. And we've learned something, and the island company in particular has brought this up repeatedly in conversations from their own analyses, that the consumer that's comparing us to those competitive destinations seems to leave out of their calculation the gasoline cost and travel time to drive to Santa Barbara or drive to Palm Springs, whereas they're very conscious of the boat cost of coming here as a plus. And I don't know how we deal with that disconnect within the consumer mind, but that's just, I got three-quarters of a tank, I can drive to Palm Springs, versus, I got three-quarters of a tank, I drive to the garage, and then I got to buy a boat ticket and pay parking to go. And that seems to be a negative, I don't know if I'm saying that quite the way that you presented it at our board retreat. But, so, we do look at our competitive set on a routine basis. I can tell you that but for Palm Springs and that competitive set, they're all exceeding seventy percent in annualized occupancy. We're still at sixty-four, sixty-six, I think.
Sixty-five.
In an annualized basis. That's not healthy. Think of seventy percent as a C grade. I mean, if you're a hotel operator, you better have a C or better, or you're going to really hurt for some of the year. And, you know, in most of business, you don't raise the cost to your buyer when you're already trying to get along, you know, just barely getting along or even declining. So, and the reason Palm Springs, I believe, it seems obvious to me, the reason they don't exceed the seventy percent is like us, but in a reverse timeframe, they do all their business in the winter, and they got to skate through summer. We do all our business in the summer and got to skate through winter, so...
So, and their winter is longer than our summer?
And their winter is longer than our summer, absolutely. And who goes there? That they, you know, Palm Springs has succeeded in being a destination now that draws from a large number of different demographics, LGBT, youth, retirees, Canadian snowbirds. So they, you know, they've got more audiences. We kind of still have our summer family travel, winter couples, we don't seem to be changing or expanding dramatically, we've made incremental gains, but we don't seem to be changing dramatically who chooses this place.
And Steve, and you're probably aware, but that Otillo that he's talking about is that swim, swim-run deal? The city put in $5,000 in the budget, and the chamber put in five as well? Or, no, you're going to do something else? Right, so, so sometimes it takes a little money, I think, to make a little money.
So contestants will stay here, even though the event itself will be held at two harbors?
We're going down the good road. I think the hedge for Atwater is group. And the reason for that is, is it's a large amount of rooms, and all the rooms are common. So you can have a group come in, and the chances are that one attendee is going to be staying in the same kind of room type as another attendee. And that's an important thing when meeting planner... So our hedge on the Atwater is off-season, midweek business. So just continuing on that group message, the other thing is, is we're starting to have some success here. We have a group coming in November third and fourth, it's a Monday, Tuesday, they're celebrating their twentieth anniversary, high-tech, it's called Cornerstone On Demand from Santa Monica, there's thirteen hundred people in that group. And it's a Monday, Tuesday. And so, you know, talking about how the chamber maybe functions a little differently, right now, it's kind of hard to book a big group like that, it takes a lot of individual calls, and so there might be a clearinghouse issue that we could address to make it easier for a meeting planner to get a whole bunch of room blocks around the town. So I just wanted to clarify, our hedge on the Atwater, it's got to be group, and it's got to be midweek.
Great, thanks. Okay, go ahead, Jim.
It occurs to me, something I left out of the conversation, that's just important because two examples were given where print was mentioned upfront. We buy almost no print advertising, that's an antiquated thing. We buy it a little bit because it maybe gets us a digital equivalent or digital access, but most of our placement has a longer life, online or digitally, and can be very targeted versus print, just in case any critics are listening and thinking that we're stuck in the past, and we're not.
Sorry, I did say print, but I'm thinking bigger picture than brochures.
I understood the comparative, yeah, yes.
But there is a need, as we've talked about many times, and this may not be the right forum for this comment, but there is a need to communicate what is available when the guest is here. And whether that be a map that is all-encompassing and not just a chamber map, whether that's something that the city participates in, and that people who are not part of the chamber are participating in, whether that's current activities, you know, along the same lines, which is not chamber-driven, but, you know, I want to explore, want the harbor to explore creating flyers for the boaters that are coming in, here's what's happening in July this month, here's all the options of things to do, or August or September or October, here's, you know, event-driven stuff, where we're actually sharing what you can do because there is discussion that people don't have enough to do, so...
And it's a valid...
There aren't aware, so creating that awareness.
I'll give a brief infomercial. You do not have to be a member of the chamber to participate in any of our advertising programs, that's an IRS ruling, we have to sell advertising to anyone doing business here who wants to. We can give a member rate, that's a discounted rate, but we are open to participation across the board. We also have an event calendar that has an online submission tool. Anybody can submit an event unless it is somehow offensive to the end user. We put it into, probably not our annual event calendar, if it's, you know, storytime at the library, but it goes on a subcalendar that's called this week, and that is distributed not only in our Thursday update, but it's perennially available online. You can type any day of the week, this week, and you'll see a seven-to-ten-day window of what's happening, and that's meant to be a front-end user tool. So waiter, waitress, bartender, anyone can have access to that. We encourage our members' businesses to maybe print them hard copy, just because people will pay attention more and, you know, and have it on the bulletin board where people are hitting the time clock or something like that, you know, but it can be seen by the end user on a mobile device. Our redesigned website is far more mobile-friendly, and so we're trying to meet all of those demands, the criticisms are valid. I get that the criticisms are valid, but we are being highly proactive in creating the opportunity for the visitor, the guest on our island, to find what is going on. We hear repeatedly from many, especially on cruise ship days, about the girth of what to do between, I'd say like 2:00 PM, 3:00 PM is the critical hour, but between 2:00 PM and their final all-aboard. But I think the same criticism can be made for other day visitors or overnight visitors, that in the afternoon, for much of the year, there's a girth of new tour originations, because there may be currently established as a two- or three-hour excursion, and then it's getting dark and, you know, it's going into overtime for the employee. I get all the dynamics on the other end, but the fact is, we have people getting back on the boat sooner because of that perception or reality, depending on the day and time of year, that there isn't enough to do for the second half of their day.
I've observed that, just observed that as well, just, you know, seeing the hordes of people go, and they've eaten, they've done a little tour in the morning, or they played miniature golf, or they went to the arcade, or whatever they do, and then they all go back early, yeah.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Another thing regarding the cruise ships is that they do promote certain businesses, but only certain businesses. They don't promote Avalon, they don't promote all businesses. They give them a map, you go here, you'll get a ticket, and you go there, you get a ticket, and then there's some kind of prize or whatever, hypothetically. I'm just saying that if the cruise ship, if we're going to be putting out this kind of information, then let's start where it's not so discriminatory with the cruise ships, having to give it to everybody, you know, the restaurants and everything. With the chamber, give it to everybody. You print it, we will hand it out. We will make sure to the yacht club, to the boaters that come in. If you guys remember back in the eighties, when we went into our discharge issue, we had to hand out flyers to every boat that came in, saying, this is the discharge, this is the policy, this is what you have to follow. So the harbor department will be more than, you know, willing to hand out anything that the city deems necessary to hand out, but I think the cruise ship side of it is that you need to touch everybody, not just certain businesses, so...
And let me ask a question of you then, Jim. For like, Jerry Dunn has that, and I guess, when people do those kinds of things, are they connecting directly with the cruise ship and paying them something? Okay.
To use Cindy's example of the online ticket fees that are paid for, online fees that are paid by a hotel that participates in their booking, it's a commissioned piece of business. The cruise ship is promoting that, which they are pre-selling through their shore excursion desk, and so that's why it's a limited framework of, here's, the people who are paying to play with us, either by an outright fee or a commission.
Okay. And then, JJ, and I'm sorry, because you know how computer-literate I am, do we have a, we must have a harbor department website?
We do have a Facebook, a Facebook account that we put stories and pictures on.
But not a website, I mean, a website?
I think a city...
The city, but when you click on it, it gives you all the information.
It'll give you that information, but I don't think we have a website.
We have a departmental webpage on the website.
And to me, that's a little harder to navigate than just Avalon Harbor Department. If there was an avalonharbordepartment.com, and all of that stuff was in there, I don't know if that would be...
That's assuming they can, they can access the information, I mean, they have, you go on the internet and you hit Catalina, and you get a myriad of different websites that...
It's also assuming that we have AT&amp;T service, too.
Yeah, well, can't solve everything. Yeah, well, can't, can't solve everything.
I didn't know, before they come over, they could look at Avalon Harbor Department, and that might be easier than, I mean, there's a lot on the chamber website. I mean, I'm...
A lot of the boaters.
And you gotta wait for all those pictures to come up, and then you gotta scroll down. It really is, takes something to get there.
A, a lot of the boaters know about the, the Facebook account when we send, you know, put out pictures and stuff like that. But that's a select few. I mean, we're talking a little bit bigger. We're talking getting everybody on cruise ships, you know, that has access to the information and not just certain, certain things, certain people, certain whatever.
Exactly, exactly.
So admittedly, I haven't been on this page on our website for a few weeks, but I know that my staff have been working to update a lot of content on information on visiting Catalina by private boat. And we've also created a whole subdomain that's called Cruise to Catalina. And again, that's content that's under development that we can put for, that many major cruise destinations have a cruise to the Bahamas, cruise to Panama. So we just adopted the framework that's kind of commonplace and, and are developing content on Cruise to Catalina that will tell, some of the basics we, we know from consumer interface that there's some misinformation that even the cruise ships put out there for those visitors. For example, we have a shore excursion manager who's the most frequent onboard and, and therefore dock greeter for the Princess Cruise, the few times a year that they come here, who refuses to stop telling in his onboard announcements the guests that they depart on their tours from the pier. They don't depart on their tours from the pier. He is sending his guests on a goose chase who then walk to the pier and, and are challenged. So we're, we're working with him and with his managers, but if we have a website where someone sees a map of the harbor and sees where shoreboat, or where tenders come in, then that, what, what we call float for, or dock for, depending on who you speak to and which sign, will be identified as quote-unquote "the pier." We won't call it the pier, but if we can educate him to use the same terminology that's on the map, that's hopefully on the lips of most of our, our frontliners, then we can at least fix that. And that's, that's getting way into the weeds, I know, but it's, it's the kind of things that we're doing daily, minute by minute, to try and improve the information the visitor can find.
All right, great, good. Okay.
So I, just to kind of recap, I have right now on, on my list four things in particular that I'm gonna go back and do some additional research, and if there are additional things besides these four, please let me know. I'm gonna come back with the 100% occupancy estimate so we can see what a, a full day in the, the winter would generate revenue-wise. I am also going to revisit the, the revenue estimates for the hotels in general, in particular with the new hotels coming back online. You know, that one might, we will have the conversation now, but we'll have a better sense, you know, in the next couple of months as the hotels actually do open up. If we do see a, an uptick in, in overall TOT revenues, we'll, we'll have that indicator, you know, after, after summer, but in the next few months. The third is a, a breakdown in the, going back to the sewer, saltwater, solid waste of what unanticipated costs are, are one-time in nature versus which ones were recurring. Again, the ones that have already occurred, we have paid for and, and paid for with fund balance, but it still would be helpful for, for future estimates. And then the fourth is one that came in with on my list is just to investigate the utilities increase overall. That, that was a major source of where our predictions weren't in line with our actual costs, and so we're gonna do some more research on our end as to, to why that was. I'm sure there, there's other things, those were the finance-related ones, but I'm happy to, if there was other things, to talk about them now.
I just wanna make sure when you, when you go to pull a, what a day of TOT would be, that you do a variation between, like, pull Wednesday night and pull a Saturday night and, and maybe look at that, because those, those rates in some cases can be 50% different.
And, and you have that kind of information daily?
I, I don't have the, the daily rate, so what I would have to do is really take a, an average for the month of what the rate was and then assume that average that would factor, the, the higher rate on Thurs.
Do that, too.
So, so it, it won't be exact, but it, it would be kind of the blended average of the week would be what that, that rate would look like. That we could do. And so I, we can, we can present it a different way, so you can try to get a, a range. Also, the average per month, there's gonna variate. So we can say this is what a, buying a, a average day in September 100% gets you versus what buying an average day in December 100% gets you.
But I think it all should be the all-in rate, the sales tax, the head tax, the bid tax, the admissions tax.
For your...
It's pretty subjective, though.
So the, 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 the only tax on the room that the, the city receives is the 12% TOT. We do have an ad tax on, on events, and we can do a similar breakdown of what, what the average day in December currently gets us.
But I think, I think Jim can give you what the average guest does, and so from that you extrapolate the, the admissions tax, and you know that there's 2.3 people per hotel room, so you'll get 2.3 times the head tax.
Okay.
But this is a profile study, it's a couple years old. It tells...
Yeah.
...
So, um, without getting, and I, I don't know if today we're gonna get into the little things that we think about for money generation, but, but I'm wondering about, I'm gonna call them preemptive solutions, and this isn't your, in your bailiwick, so I'm getting you off the hook. For example, ways to reduce energy costs, like I always talk about solar. What, and solutions to reduce the landfill instead of having to put in $5 million to maintain it or close it or whatever, if, again, if we can pull all of that stuff up and create additional, you know, energy sources, that will help us in the long run. And I know, and I don't know about grants, and I guess it's more of a Bob thing and a, and a Michael Palmer, but what is out there? So over the long term, we're, we're taking care of the problem instead of paying to hide it or, you know, and so I would really like to see us do some creative things that way and save us all a lot of money.
I have to agree with you, Annie. Maybe we can start talking about new development and requirements for, for solar panels and new development with houses doing cisterns down to capture water. All this stuff can be done and is being done, and that would focus on the future on, you know, water issues, energy issues, and, you know, there's lots of stuff out there that we can start doing and being proactive for the future.
Mm-hmm. Or else it's gonna be every year, we're gonna have to just continue to increase, and it's, that's gotta stop. We've gotta get green or whatever color we need to be in.
I think we used to talk about this when, I, I know when you and I first came on council, that was a big push that we had was to be, we have such a unique opportunity to be a, sort of a brewing ground for so many different things, and I'd like to see us put staff resources back into being this little town where things can be tried and, and things that, you know, being pilot programs, they're a lot less expensive than, in, you know, installing a program. But it was a big push that we had years ago.
Yeah.
I'd love to see our staff, go, staff resources back to that.
Exactly. 'Cause there are people that contact the city about wanting to do special projects and showcase, 'cause they see the benefit of the million people coming a year and people wanting to come to see what we're doing. So it's just like events, once they know we're out here and, and the other thing to the whole event thing is, and like you say, a committee to make it easier for people to come and do these things. It gets, sometimes it's like, "Oh, we can have this come," but then it's like, "Oh, now we've got it, so let's price everything up," instead of making it easy for them to come and want to return. So, anyway. Okay, do we wanna get in the weeds on little projects or...
I have one more thing.
What's that?
I have one more topic.
Okay, good.
City properties. I, I know the city does not have a lot of property, but I think we're underutilizing what we have, and I think there's opportunity to generate more income from those properties. I know that we have contracts and leases which probably are well-written for multiple years, but when we have a business on prime real estate that's closed in the middle of summer that we're not collecting our 8% or 10%, it's kind of ridiculous. I mean, we're, we're, that's, you know, we really need to take an opportunity on our properties to generate more income that's not being generated. We have the casino dock that's sitting there empty, we could, opportunity there, we have opportunities other places. So, I mean, I would like to maybe even have a committee and, that get together with some of the city staff and just like the events to kind of brainstorm a little bit on what other things can be done and how we can utilize those.
And with regard to casino dock, that is not a dead issue, but one that has kind of been put on hold by, can we talk about that?
Yeah, no, actually, I'll be meeting with them in the very near future. We've been in communication in the last two weeks.
Okay, okay. And just some little things, I mean, this is kind of silly, can we just get down to little ones?
Mm-hmm.
Unless you have more big ones, like, those are big ones. Okay. I would like to see on all those departments that can come up with income-generating ideas. For example, we have thrown out, and whether, fall on community services, 'cause that's my favorite department or, or the one I know most about, I think, dear to my heart, is we can sell merchandise. We can sell City of Avalon merchandise that will help fund, even if it's little things, you know, like helping with the Fourth of July or whatever, or new, or to bring more music and that kind of thing, so we can pay bands. But we could look at that and, I mean, t-shirts and beach towels and blah, 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 and however we wanna go about that. We could be selling beer and wine at casino, at our fuel dock in the summertime, or when people are there. We could be having more than just ice and sodas and candy bars. That would be, and then, 'cause especially, I mean, there's times when the, the guys, maybe not so much in the summer, but in the winter, there's not a lot to do there. They're sitting there, and they, they might sell a cup of coffee. Anyway, it'd be nice to look at some income generating on that. And perhaps a little bit along the line of what you're saying, we have been, I think we were very lenient on, let's say, on the businesses on the pier that aren't, aren't open a lot. And, and as we all know, in the middle of winter, people go down and, and a lot of those places are closed up early. And I know we can't, private businesses, we really can't say much, but, but the ones that are on our properties, we might wanna look at that a little bit more in the future.
I can actually tell you that most private businesses in town all have things in their leases that require you to be open almost 365 days out of the year, every single one of them.
Everyone. And we were very, and we were very lenient when, you know, we went through that.
Yes, I do wanna remind the council that staff did recommend certain days, certain months to require our leases to be open, and you turned that down, so you were very lenient. I did ask, Councilmember Haves asked me about the leases, and because we went into them for 10 years, unless the, the tenant is willing to enter into an agreement to renegotiate, otherwise it's a done deal till the lease expires.
Yeah, okay.
It should be about five years in now, for, yeah.
It, it would, if, this is all part of bringing guests to us year-round, and if you can really reconsider your leases, because that is a huge, huge factor with all our customers coming and not having a place to eat, not having a place to shop. Our tenants are not allowed to shut down. I mean, I mean, it's hard because you can't police them all the time, but believe me, we are on it as much as we can. If we're not open, where do these guests have to eat, shop? And it, it, we all need to be on the same page. I wish I can shut down December, January, February, March. That'd be ideal business. But I, we can't, and that's not what we're here, this island, for. We need to have a place for people to enjoy, and that's part of the customer service. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And I've asked a question, but just for the sake of discussion. Purchasing collectively, and I've kind of, and you can address that, or Matt can address that. I don't know if there's ways like our consumable, our consumable supplies amongst all departments, our tools and that kind of thing, programs where perhaps the tools aren't, and I don't know, maybe it's all in, in, happening now, Bob, I don't know, but so that there's, there's responsibility taken by the employees to maintain their equipment and that kind of thing, and, and maybe, again, maybe it's all, you don't even need to address it, maybe that's already happening. But somehow to, if there's a way to, and I don't know if you can say to departments, you know, reduce your consumable supplies, find creative ways to reduce those expenses by a certain percentage. I don't know. And I don't know how many thousands of dollars that is when you, when you add up all the departments. That's not a number you need to give me, but if that's something that maybe could be looked at. Another question. This year, when I got my conservancy permit, I didn't have to show that I had a city sticker. And I don't know...
You do.
Yeah, you did.
You do.
I did not.
It's on the application.
It's on the application.
Yeah, but you're just providing a number, Annie, saying there's no verification.
Okay, we had to do it in person 'cause it was so, so difficult to do online, but it's on there?
Yeah.
Okay. So, but, but there are conversation, okay, there are comments that, and anybody can help me out here, that there are, there are conservancy permits issued and those, and there are vehicles that don't have city stickers.
Make up a November, yes. We just discussed that internally with staff, Annie, actually yesterday morning, and how we need to reach out to the conservancy to be more of a cooperative team together where we would supply our list of vehicle numbers, and then they could cross-reference that. We have to work it out.
Because that's income that we're not getting as well.
Absolutely.
I guess that's it for now.
So I, I wanna make sure, so right now there is no desire of the council to proceed forward with any tax idea, and the only reason I want to, clarification that, just the timing if we were to try to put something on a ballot measure. So if that's the temperature right now, then I'm good with it, but I just wanna make sure.
Well, what other things are out there in the world to generate money?
We, we do have a, a planned audit for admissions tax in the fiscal year 20 budget. You know, again, we're not talking large dollar amounts, but there's potential, you know, leakage there that we could recapture. So, you know, they're, they're, again, not huge dollar amounts, but I think, you know, seeing the value in some of the, the audits we do of our revenues and prioritizing that as, as a finance department, I think there is some value in that. We just finalized the TOT audit. I know it seemed, happened a while ago, back in January, and we're sending out letters this week, and, and we, hopefully we'll recapture the, the cost of the, the audit and then some with the findings that were in that. So I, I, I think that's another thing to, to keep as a, as a priority as a finance department, is, is some of that, you know, even if we don't recoup a, a ton of money, just when people know you're looking, they, you know, tend to, to pay closer attention themselves. So that's, that's something we do as a department, and, and we'll continue to, to improve on as well.
I would be interested in having agenda item, talk about the sales tax, a quarter
Okay. And what about CUPs? I think that discussion needs to happen because of the money we're perhaps not getting or what we're doing with those people that are just giving us the $12 a year and all of that. I don't think that's been resolved.
That, that has not. So we have been doing some compliance audits of our short-term rentals, partially using host compliance for some of that, and we did identify some properties, not a significant number, that were either operating without a CUP or operating but not paying any TOT, and we are working with planning finances and, and taking action on those. I believe it, it was discussed in, I think, yesterday's planning commission meeting, but it may have been the one before. You know, as, as far as a minimum requirement, that's, my understanding is that's through the municipal code. I, I don't know what that process is, but there, planning does have a breakdown of kind of the general average of, of how much each property provides. It's, we didn't do it for every single property, just 'cause we do, one of the challenges we have is we have a lot of paper records still, and so when we're trying to extrapolate data, it's, it's a data entry aspect to it, kind of takes a lot of staff time. And that's, but we, we do have some idea of how much the average CUP is generating, but as far as a minimum, I don't think there is other than, there, my understanding is as long as they rent one night for $1 and we get that 12 cents, they're compliant. That's, that's my understanding.
So we did have a conversation last evening with the planning commission. The primary subject in the discussion was about saturation and how we determine... saturation, um, and possibly going forward with some changes to the code. So, um, we are going to get a cohesive proposal together, bring it to the councils, because if the council's not on board with what the commission's thinking, then it's no point of going through the whole ordinance resolution process. But one of the things that we could consider is if we want to impose a minimum dollar amount that someone has to pay, um, TOT in order to keep their permit active. Number of days, I don't think helps us, because then they just drop the price that they're supposedly claiming. But if we, if the council's will is to look at imposing a minimum dollar amount in TOT, um, I know some cities do impose, um, a number of days in order to keep it active, but that doesn't necessarily generate a certain amount of TOT.
Well, to me, a minimum, a minimum be the cost of what it takes to apply for a CUP every year. So if it's $3,000, we'd get a minimum of $3,000, and that would keep them active. And I know, and I know there's that whole thing of looking at the grandfather issue as well, what we can do, and hopefully y'all are talking about, um, because as it comes to property value, how we can look at over time, um, phasing, phasing those out, you know, how you figure out a value to what that cost of that is and, and give them so many years on it, instead of everybody being grandfathered for life.
Okay, so the, there are two categories of transient rentals. Ones are the ones you, that you're calling grandfathered, which means they have been in existence since before the code changed and we started requiring a conditional use permit. Then we have properties on the books that have conditional use permits.
Right.
So out of those two pools, we have properties that only pay a very minimum amount, um, per year to keep their permit alive, and it, the amount of TOT they're paying doesn't reflect that it's actively renting.
Right.
And so I think that is the, the group of properties that we would like to see a minimum, that would be the purpose of imposing some type of minimum amount of TOT. We also are going to be bringing forward, um, a proposal to sun, not sunset, but terminate how we currently grant, um, transient rental permits, and we'll move it into an administrative license, so it would no longer be a land use entitlement that goes with the land.
Right.
The city attorney was not in favor of trying to sunset the current permits. He says he thinks that's, can create a lot of other issues and, and we could have a legal challenge. I know some cities have done it. They say your permit's going to be good for another five years, and then after that, it's going to go away. Um, one of the things we discussed was having the current permits sunset by a certain date, but that they would automatically convert into the new type of permit. So you wouldn't actually be taking it away from the current owner, but they wouldn't have something that they could pass on to the new, if they were to sell it.
And then the new owner has to come and apply.
And then the owner would have to come in and apply.
Not, not going with the transfer of the property is, is, I think, something we've all talked about.
But how, how do we, I guess, that's something that we talked about already at the council level, so I, I would like more information and more data from the city attorney as, as, I would like him to give us all the reasons why we shouldn't do that, because I'm in favor of doing that.
Right. And I think he would just thought that they, some people might accuse the city of a taking, you're taking this right away from them, but if it automatically converts.
It automatically converts, yes.
It would be interesting to know a little more of why that would not work.
Right.
But it, the bottom line is we're, we've just about got all of our little tweaks to the code that we think we're going to present, and we're going to present it to the council just as like an item of discussion, and if, and the council's on board, then it would come back to the commission for the resolution ordinance process.
Right.
And just to add, we'll get you that information, but the sunsetting versus termination to some of the considerations that other cities have looked at in making a determination is how to administratively monitor that. So, uh, you know, who is currently sunsetting, at what point do they sunset, how does it go? So sometimes it's just cleaner administratively to terminate, um, but I know there's a lot of other considerations to include in there.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of termination at all.
No. And I think, and in light of what Mike is saying, if we go forward with the conversion to an administrative permit, whatever date that permit starts would be a good date to say, okay, five years from this date, any of the other existing ones are going to sunset into the new permit. So you would have a, kind of a line in the sand.
That, that's what I meant, yes.
Yeah. And, and so those are some of the nuts and bolts that we would have to work out on the, on the administrative side. But that, that'll be coming back to you, I think Mr. Campbell said, possibly in September.
Well, I'm glad the planning commission is, is looking at it and.
Yeah, we had a really excellent, um, table discussion last night about it, so.
Good, good. Thank you, Amanda. Okay, and then if you can refresh my memory, numbered receipts.
So, beginning in January, we have been requiring businesses to provide numbered receipts. It has, uh, not been the smoothest of transitions, and there's a number of reasons for that. Um, we have a number of businesses that have multiple point-of-sale systems, so they don't just have one beginning and ending receipt number, they might have three, four, or five. Um, another challenge is we've had is there's a number of businesses that have a lot of transactions that might not be subject to ad tax. So if you sell a tour and you sell a t-shirt, the, the t-shirt would still be in that numbered receipt category, but not, um, subject to the admissions tax. So there, my understanding of the intent behind having the numbered receipts was to have another data point to use to, um, get a better understanding if we think businesses are faithfully reporting. Um, so there's been, what we've tried to do is work with businesses to, if not provide us with numbered receipts, to provide us with information that would give us a sense of the volume of transactions associated with the amount they're reporting as gross receipt. I would say 80% of the, the businesses have been reporting every month, no issue, numbered receipts. When we do get one back, we have been following up with the businesses to get numbered receipts, um, and, and we've been working with them on this process. Where the numbered receipt information's going to be helpful is when we do an admissions tax audit in the future. Uh, we don't necessarily want to select every business in town, just because that, that becomes a, a burden on the auditors or increases the cost of the audit. So what we intend to do with that numbered receipt information is look at whether the, the average transaction amount for the gross receipts is consistent. So if, if we have a business that gives us 5,000 a month and reports 500 transactions in that month, so we have an average of $10 a transaction, if, if one month that number triples or quadruples, there's something odd then going on and that might prompt us to select that business over, say, other businesses. And so that's really the intent behind it. But by and large, every business has been reporting, and the ones that haven't have either talked to me about an alternative reporting relationship, um, where they maybe report the number of transactions rather than give a beginning and ending receipt number. Um, and anytime we get a report that doesn't have it, we have been following up with the businesses. I'm not saying we're, we're at 100%, um, but we have been, um, working to get there.
Well, the businesses that I specifically have talked about.
They are providing numbered receipts, and they have been.
Okay. I just don't see them on the pieces of paper that I see in the street that come off of the golf carts, for example. And you would think that numbered receipt would be on there as well, because that is their receipt that says, you know, $45 on a credit card and $45 cash, and then, but.
If, if those businesses were to be selected for, for an audit, and my intent likely it will be based on the, the volumes or how much money we get, because those would be the businesses with the potential, you know, biggest return, if you think of it in that way. And also, any business with, say, an, an unusual reporting history would be something else we would look and consider. Um, and if they are providing us with a beginning and ending receipt number as part of the audit, my expectation or understanding would be the auditors would be looking at that information they've given us and comparing it with their record. So if there was any misreporting, I would, I would expect that to be something the auditors would be looking at.
I believe there's been misreporting for a number of years, and, and we're not seeing those numbers increase, unless we're seeing the numbers increase because the cost of the rental has gone up for those, you know, for everyone, so.
And admissions tax is something that we're planning on doing this fiscal year, and we do have money in the budget, um, for an admissions tax audit. So my, my expectation probably would be sometime, uh, at the end of summer, to be coming to council with, uh, an RFP to, to go out for that.
Can't we start the RFP earlier?
We, we absolutely can.
Thank you. I've only been asking it for five years, so, um, what the heck. So thank, I mean, is that okay, folks, to try to get sooner than later? Okay.
If I may make a suggestion, for a small incremental revenue opportunity would be, and, and I've already started this conversation a little bit with Dan Hunky, to revisit the film permit fees and, um, possibly adding a, a minimum application fee that is not refundable, that is, that, that just sort of deals with the very time-intensive staff resources on our agency and, and on the, the city's agency, um, for putting these together. And so, you know, some flat rate minimum amount to be determined. So it wouldn't be a huge revenue fund, but, but it would at least maybe address a little bit of drain by, by covering some of that cost.
Yeah, great. Bart?
I just wanted to address a comment you had made, Annie, about, um, there'd have to be a minimum amount that you would pay on a, on a CUP, um, tax. Right now, it's about $3,200 for me to come apply, and I did last night and I got one. It cost me 32, uh, excuse me, 3,200 to apply. If you say I've got to make that every year, I would just lease my home out when I'm on vacation or something like that. That would mean I would have to make $27,000 a year to pay that minimum of 3,000. That's insane. I mean, that's a source of revenue that you would be losing if, if, if you went down that route. Um, I, I mean, if you have homes that are, people leave for a month or two at a time and they lease them out, you're probably not going to make $27,000 in revenue to pay your minimum tax. And considering it's a third of the 55% of the entire city budget, I think you guys should really look at that. I think the CUP application thing is absorbent to begin with, because I know what it takes to put one of these up to, uh, uh, the city, what happens. Um, but I think when you come up with just some, uh, a minimum amount of tax you have to receive in return for someone who leaves their home for a month at a time and just leases it out, they're still paying you the 12%, I think you'd be shooting yourself in the foot by getting rid of them.
Well, then, when you all are at the planning commission, you can really discuss that and weed that out and come up with alternatives.
It still all comes up in front of you guys.
Oh, I know, I know. But we appreciate the homework you all do and, and all the dialogue that you, you know, you put hours into it when you have a planning commission meeting, and we don't put hours into that one topic here. So, so we appreciate what you do there. Okay.
Can I summarize a couple of things?
Please.
Okay, so at our next study session, which I'll give you a couple of dates in a minute, Matt's coming forward with the four bullet points that he already mentioned to the council. Uh, there is no flavor at this time to proceed forward with any TOT tax increase, but, uh, we are going to bring back an agendized item to talk about, uh, sales tax and what that implication would be. Uh, there is some ideas for revenue, revenue generating things, and that would be, um, Councilmember Hayes would like to get together with some staff and chamber to talk about off-season events, as well as some city property ideas. The mayor's mentioned some on clothing, selling beer and wine and sundries at the fuel dock, reducing supplies and equipment with city staff and what percentage drop, what would that bring into us? And then the CUP thing would be handled, uh, a later date, and also to bring forward an RFP for numbered receipts audit.
Admission tax.
Admission tax audit. Thank you, Matt.
And then.
And then the other thing I would like to know, if there's a consensus, to bring back, uh, an item for an RFP for, um, I just.
The cost of service study.
Thank you. Cost of service study. Is, do we?
Yeah.
Is that okay? Okay. Thank you.
And then again, all those preemptive solutions to our problems going down, going forward. Alternative energy, energy creation and that kind of thing. Um, because I think that would be the biggest long-term savings to us in those areas, like saltwater sewer, perhaps in, uh.
Yes.
Whatever the other one is, saltwater sewer and.
Solid waste.
Solid waste, solid waste, even more specific, yes. Okay.
I have a couple of dates, August 15th and August 22nd. Those, obviously in about a month from now, and that gives staffs time to come back with some numbers for some of those, uh, revenue generating ideas. Those are both Thursdays. We have council in August on the 6th and the 20th.
Uh, 15th is the work, because my wife's coming back from Bozeman, I have to pick her up.
Okay.
So 20, we have a meeting?
We have a meeting on August 20th.
So maybe the 22nd, same week? Is that easier when it's kind of in the same week?
I'll send out an email today just to have, so you can all check your calendar.
Okay. I'm good on either date, but if he's not going to be here on the 15th, so, so you got two for the 22nd. Okay, anything else? Comments?
Oh, my God.
Don't say peanut gallery. Okay, there's no further business? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much, Matt and Jim.
Thanks, Matt. Good job.
Bart and everybody that spoke to Matt.
Everybody, good job.
It's helpful to get feedback, you and I. We need more learnings.